All right, Rick is is coming in, so I'll.
Yeah.
Start to record it. And here's Aaron, he's just trying to get in now, so.
Scott.
We're getting, we have Rick in. Rick, a thumbs up if you can hear me. Thumbs up. Got Tim coming in.
How about Ryan?
Uh, we'll have Ryan. Ryan and Carl. Carl's now just coming in. Must have been the paid person who set up these Zooms because I get to see everyone coming in before they actually arrive.
That was close for me, the auditor just left my office. So if I get a little hangry tonight, don't blame me.
All right.
And so far, one citizen is attending Jackie Coney. I just. I did just text Mr. Wagner. But we're about one minute till six o'clock.
Yep.
Straight up six o'clock?
Um.
It is right now. Yep.
Is Carl with us?
Carol is with us.
I'm here.
Evening all.
Oh.
Didn't see my beautiful cubicle on the road.
Yeah.
Oh, where's my agenda for tonight?
Uh. You want me to bring that up before the?
No, that's fine.
There'll be a pledge of allegiance after the start and then I'll bring up, I'm just also. Trying to. See if Ryan or yeah, Ryan comes in.
Yeah.
Have we been called to order yet?
Nope, that's up to Mr.
All right.
Anytime you wanna, just second, I, Ryan will be coming in a second, but you can start at any time.
Let's go ahead. Call the tonight's meeting, January 18th, or oh my gosh. He must have forgot something, the auditor is calling me back. It's uh, we'll start tonight's special session. Jim, do you want to take roll call first?
Or we pledge allegiance first? Pledge of allegiance first and then roll call or come.
All right, let's go ahead and start that. I pledge allegiance.
To the. And to the republic, which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. We're getting better.
I would agree. And let me. Trying to get the screen share to do, do, do you have the agenda in front of you, Mr. Frisbee, or?
I do, it wants to open up, here it comes.
All right, it'll, it will be a roll call, which I'll go ahead and do, and then the approval of the agenda. Roll call will be trustee Keller.
Here.
Trustee Holmes.
Here.
Trustee Olson.
Here.
Trustee Merrill.
Here.
Trustee Reaster.
Here.
Trustee Wagner.
Here.
President Frisbee.
Here.
Okay. You have approval of agenda and there's no public officials that I see on the call. And then we have the presentation by Aaron Stevens, who conducted our audit as well as a follow up from Steve Brier. On some of the financials.
So everybody had a chance to review the agenda and have any questions or comments about it? You're hearing none?
There, I think I finally got it.
Trustee Keller moved to approve the agenda submitted.
Trustee Keller, is there support?
Trustee Wagner in support.
Trustee Wagner in support. Roll call vote will be trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yeah.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. We have an approval of the agenda, there's scheduled on the agenda tonight is Aaron Stevens and Steve Brier. And who do you want to start out with?
We do have citizen comments and Jackie Coney is on the call, if Jackie wishes to speak during this time, if she indicates by raising her hand. Confident you know how by highlighting the bottom of the screen and clicking on the yellow hand. And seeing how she has passed on that. We can continue on, Mr. Frisbee. To the presentation.
Let's do that.
All right, I will get Mr. Stevens is. Okay, we'll introduce Aaron Stevens, who's been in the game of governmental municipal audits for quite some time, and this is. The second year that we've been fortunate enough to work with him, so we'll. Turn it over to Mr. Stevens.
All right, thank you. I have here a, I think a brief PowerPoint presentation, but I'd like to start out and just express our thanks to the village administration staff. As well as to Steve Brier and his team from Siegfried Crandall. The pandemic certainly presented some challenges this year, but we got, it was a collaborative effort. And I would, would like to thank everyone for their, for their part in that. We were able to file the audit with the Department of Treasury before the December 31st deadline. What I plan to do is highlight what I think are the key areas, but if you've got questions, feel free to stop me at any time, we can go through those. In the bound financial statement report, the, we have the independent auditors report that's presented on pages three and four. And I always like to start out with a reminder that the purpose or the objective of an audit is to express opinions as to whether the financial statements are fairly presented. The purpose of an audit is not to detect fraud or give you an opinion on your internal controls. Fraud detection, deterrence and prevention, as well as sound internal control, are management responsibilities. Now, if we find fraud, we certainly have a responsibility to communicate that to you. If we have recommendations on how to improve your internal controls, we will let you know about those as well. But the independent auditor's report, as I said, is presented on pages three and four. I've included a few, a few paragraphs from that report on the next few slides here. And in the second paragraph on page three of the financial statement report, we highlight that management is responsible for the preparation of the financial statements. Preparation and fair presentation. So not only are you responsible or is management responsible for the fraud detection, deterrence and profession? They're also responsible for that, that present or preparation and fair presentation, including the internal controls over that preparation and fair presentation. Our responsibility is highlighted in the third paragraph on page three, and that is to express opinions on the financial statements based on our audit. So the opinions will tell you whether or not we believe they are fairly presented in all mature respects in accordance with GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. We express our opinions in the first paragraph on page four, and that paragraph reads, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all mature respects. That is the important phrase that present fairly in all mature respects is what we refer to as an unmodified opinion. On the financial statements, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. To put that into some perspective for you, there are three types of opinions we can express. You have the unmodified opinion, that's what you want to see. We could have expressed the qualified opinion, and that might read something like, except for capital assets, the financial statements referred to above present fairly. We could have expressed an adverse opinion where the financial statements do not present fairly the, the financial position of the village of Vicksburg. The only other alternative that we have as auditors would be to disclaim an opinion altogether. We did not audit your financial statements. So as I said, you have that unmodified opinion, that's what you want to see as a, as a council, it's the highest level of assurance that, that we can provide. Next, we have the government wide financial statements, and, and these are presented on pages 12 and 13 of the report on financial statements. Government wide financial statements are prepared on the full accrual basis of accounting, which means they primarily have a long term perspective. The only time you see this level of reporting is in your audited financial statements. You don't see this, this reporting throughout the year. The government wide statement of net position is a snapshot as of June 30th, 2020, of your assets deferred outflows of resources. Liabilities deferred inflows of resources in the resulting net position. That is broken down into governmental activities, business type activities, and then the component units. A couple of financial performance indicators that I like to look at, one being the current ratio, which is a measure of liquidity, tells you if you were able to. To meet your current obligations in the near term or in the short term. For governmental activities, that current ratio is 19.4 as of June 30th. And for the business step activities, it was 6.3. So what that tells me is that you're more than capable of paying your bills in a timely manner. 19.4 is excellent, 6.3 is, is just as good. Sometimes I'm asked, what should it be? I can tell you it shouldn't be less than one. If it's less than one, then, then you're not able to meet your obligations. So you want to make sure that it's over one and you're well above that. The unrestricted net position compared to expenses tells you how long you could operate at your current levels before needing to generate any additional revenue. For governmental activities, that calculates out to be 84%, which is about 10 months worth of operations. And for the business type activities, it's about 80%, which is, is about nine and a half months, a little more than nine and a half months. So again, excellent financial condition on the full accrual basis of accounting. The statement of activities is next, this is on page 13, a little backwards because we start with expenses in the left hand column. And we read left to right, we add back in the program revenues and, and then read top to bottom and add in the general revenues. The bottom line or the results for the year is that both governmental activities and business type activities improved their net position. For governmental activities by 718,000 and for the business type activities, it improved by 618,000. The governmental fund financial statements are prepared on the modified accrual basis of accounting, which is a current financial resources focus. Should be a more familiar presentation for you. You, you prepare your budgets on the, at the fund level. You get the interim reporting throughout the year is at the fund level. So again, it should be more familiar for you. The governmental funds balance sheet is presented on page 14. Once again, it's a snapshot, a, a very specific point in time being June 30th. I tend to focus on the general fund as the operating fund for the village, and your total fund balance as of June 30th was 2.2 million, approximately 2.2 million. That fund balance is broken down into five potential classifications. You know, and you see them there on the screen, non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned and unassigned. The village of Vicksburg does not happen to, to have any restricted fund balance as of June 30th in the general fund. But you do have amounts in the other, other components or classifications of fund balance. But what I like to look at is the, is what you have available for future use, and those are the assigned and unassigned portions of your fund balance. And collectively, I refer to that as unrestricted. And compare that with your annual expenditures for the year that ended June 30th, 2020. And if we take the assigned fund balances, 401,000, the unassigned is 869,000. Compare that with your expenditures of the 1.6 million, and that calculates out to be approximately 78%. So that, that unrestricted fund balance represents approximately 78% of your annual expenditures, which is excellent. The, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that you maintain a minimum fund balance in your general fund. And is equal to two months worth of normal operations. Two out of 12 months is about 17% and the village is at 78% as I said. So that's about 9.6 months of operations in the general fund. Excellent financial condition. The statement of revenues expenditures and changes in fund balances is presented on page 15, still focusing on the general fund here. The, the financial statements themselves really don't, don't lend themselves very well to a PowerPoint presentation. So I pulled out some, some of the highlights. For the general fund, total revenues just over $2 million. That was a decrease from the 29 fiscal, or excuse me, 2019 fiscal year of about 2%. The expenditures at approximately 1.6 million, that was an increase over the prior year by about 3%. But you were still able to add $441,000 to your fund balance in the general fund. So again, a positive year financially, good results. On the, the next slide, we have a five year bar graph. Shows you the trend for the general fund, total revenues, total expenditures, total fund balance. And as you can see, your fund balance, that, that yellow bar on the chart has had a healthy upward trend for the last five years. And you ended June 30th again at, at about $2.2 million, June 30th, 2020. Now, this is a pie chart that details the composition of your general fund revenue. As you can see, your largest two sources of funds, property taxes at 69%, followed by intergovernmental at 22%. And that's, that consists primarily of state revenue sharing, your sales tax. In comparison to 2019, your property taxes were 66% and your intergovernmental was about 20%. So fairly consistent from year to year in terms of the composition. Similarly, on the expenditure side, public safety at 47%, general government at 21% and public works were at 15%. The other category here includes community and economic development, capital outlay, debt service and recreation and culture. So each of those, those functions by themselves would be fairly small, so I grouped them together and that makes up the other 17% of the pie here. In comparison to 2019, your public safety is at 49%, general government at 16% and public works at 15%. So again, fairly consistent from year to year in terms of the composition. This line graph is a five year trend of the unrestricted portion of your fund balance compared to expenditures. So again, a drastic change from where you started back in 2016. You see a, a very significant upward trend from 17 to 18, and then it dips down from 18 to 19. But it dips down because that, that was the year that you first started to commit some of your fund balance for the new village hall. So once that fund balance has been committed by the council, it's, it's set aside, it's, it's no longer unrestricted. Because it's not in one of those, it's not in assigned or unassigned. It's, it's been committed for a future, future use. So that's why it dropped from 18 to 19, but then back up again in 20. So the last three years, that, that unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of expenditures has ranged from 66% to 85%. Very strong. In terms of dollars, the blue line is, is where you actually are. The brownish red color line there is 17% of each year's annual expenditures. So just to give you an idea of the separation that you've, you've enjoyed from 2016 to 2020, that, that gap is, has grown. Again, just, just strong financial results over the last five years. Just to note here, 2016, you're right at about that 17% mark. It's improved since. The proprietary funds are prepared on the full accrual basis of accounting, just like the government line financial statements. The village of Vicksburg has three proprietary funds, all of which are enterprise funds, those being the sewer fund, water fund and the golf course fund. Enterprise funds report the same information as is reported for the business step activities in the government wide financial statements, both on the full accrual basis of accounting. But at this level in the funds, you get greater detail in a slightly different format. So what I'll do here is, is highlight. Of the funds themselves unrestricted net position, we're going to focus on the equity section again, that unrestricted net position. The sewer fund at 799,645 dollars, and that represents approximately 152% of the operating expenses after you factor out depreciation as a non cash expense. For the water fund, you're at $657,000, which represents approximately 183% of that operating expenses. Less depreciation, and then for the golf course funds, it's at 22% with about $180,000 of unrestricted net position.
Hey Steve, if I, Steve, if I may just interject real quick, you know, for all those village residents that may be watching this and looking at. The sewer and water fund, you know, thinking we're pretty fat and happy right now. You know, a couple of things have led us to this point, one being that we had to. Put our income statement together such that the USDA would guarantee that we could pay off the coming loans. And we have taken a draw off the coming loans. We've got an aged infrastructure that, as we'll see here in the coming months, we're going to tear into. To put in new sewers, new forest mains. So that's going to draw down that, that fund quite considerably. So I just wanted to make it known that we're not profiting off of this. We had to put ourselves in a position to rebuild the infrastructure. And that's where this money is going to. Yeah, thank you, thank you, Aaron.
Yep. And I think it's important to note that we can't look at these, these enterprise funds, proprietary funds in the same way that we look at the general fund. There are other factors to consider. I need, you touched on both of those, the debt service requirements that you have, as well as the, the capital needs. Being a different basis of accounting, full accrual basis, it, it does not function in the same way. These funds do not function in the same way as the general fund or, or any other governmental fund. And, and we'll highlight that here in a, in a few slides as well. But on the, the next slide here, we have a, a five year trend for the sewer fund of your total net position. But it's broken down into the components of unrestricted, restricted, and the amount that's invested in capital. And I show you this, this slide because you, you can't spend that net investment in capital assets. That's, that's money that's spent on your, on your sewer system in this case. Those assets are underground. The only way to use that, that equity would be to sell your system, and you're not going to do that. So. That's not available for you. The restricted component is not available for you. What you have available is that unrestricted portion of your total net position. And you can see here, in this case, all three components of that net position increased from 18 to 19, so a solid year financially. But as you touched on earlier, you're getting ready for a rather large capital project. And so you're going to need that unrestricted net position for future use. When we compare the unrestricted net position as a percentage of operating expenses over the last five years, you can see that, that strong upward trend here. But again, we expect that to drop in 2021, once, once that money starts going out for the capital project. For the water fund, total net position did increase from 2019 to 2020, but you'll note at the bottom there that the unrestricted net. Portion of that net position actually decreased by about $51,000. And, and there were reasons behind that as well. You had a presetting of the third well for the village that, that ran about $100,000. So that was the primary reason for the, the decrease in the unrestricted net position. And then a five year trend for the water fund, it did drop for the last couple of years, but then from 19 to 20, a slight increase in that percentage. So again, this is, you don't look at this the same way as you look at the general fund, you're sitting at 183%. I would not say that's excessive. I think you have to look at the components and, and we'll talk about those components in, in a few slides. But then the, finally, the, the golf course fund. I, I refer to this as the, the feel good story for the village, looking at where you started back in 2016. You were in the negative in terms of unrestricted net position. That carried on in 2017 and 2018. It, it got a little bit worse in those years, and then you turned it around in, in 2019 and 2020. So even though that unrestricted portion of your net position is only at 22%, you are a long way from where you were in 2016. So kudos to the village on that. And, and that's even more evident, I think, on the next slide. We showed the line graph comparing that unrestricted net position to your operating expenses and, and just the, the change. You went from that negative about 17% up to 22% positive over the last five years. So excellent work on behalf of the, the administration and the council on that. But as I said. When we get, when we talk about unrestricted net position for proprietary funds or enterprise funds, there are three components that I think need to be considered here. And, and for the general fund, for a modified accrual basis of accounting, we start with two months worth of operations. I think it's important to be a little more conservative here for, for your enterprise funds. And so what I would suggest is that you start with operating expenses, but three months worth of, of operations. And then factor into that what your next year's principal and interest requirements would be. And we have to add that into that minimum unrestricted net position because a principal payment reduces a liability. It is not included in expenses. Interest payments are actually non operating expenses, so those aren't included in your operating expenses, less depreciation either. And then we get to your capital needs, and this is probably the most subjective part of this whole calculation. Because your capital needs are unique to the village of Vicksburg. Your system is not the same as, as the neighboring villages' system. So you will have different capital needs than they have. And again, we have to add this back into the minimum recommendation because a, a capital asset increases assets on the statement of net position. It's not included in expenses. So we have to factor all three of these pieces in to come up with what that minimum unrestricted net position should be for an enterprise fund. So, so not sound like a dead horse, but, or not to beat a dead horse, but this is not the same as the general fund, and, and you do need that higher level of unrestricted net position. I went through that pretty quickly, but I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I know we've had an opportunity to discuss on a one-on-one basis with the team in the results, so a lot of the questions may have already come up. Some of the things that jump out at me is the unrestricted fund balance, you know, in 2016, some of us on the council. Put a challenge towards the current leadership, Mr. Mallory and the staff, to get to 20% unrestricted fund balance. You know, we were at 17 prior years, who knows what it was. But to hit 78% right now is, is phenomenal. So congratulations and. You know, the golf course is another one, you know, nobody wanted to own that golf course. Somehow we, we ended up with it. It was quite a drain on this village from a timeframe and a financial. And by, you know, Mr. Mallory bringing in Tom Hamm and his company, turned that place around now, it's a. You know, it's all of a sudden become a profit maker for the, for the village. And it's been, it's a model golf course, you know, in the industry, people rave about that place. So congratulations on that part, for sure.
Yeah, and if, if we, if we can, Steve Brier had one, he went, had one just short comments, and then we'll get to all the open questions if that's okay. he had one just short comments, and then we'll get to all the open questions, if that's okay, because I want to make sure his slide was put up into the record.
Yeah, and I would like to thank Steve for for giving us this information, I think it's very important, so I would like him to comment on that if he would.
Okay, you're welcome, I was glad to do it. So I was looking at the thinking about the village and the the condition it was in when I started working with the village. I became the auditor in twenty fifteen, so I did the audit from twenty fifteen through twenty seventeen. And then we moved into the position of we helped with accounting, so we did some accounting assistance from twenty eighteen to the present time. So when I started in twenty fifteen, I was looking at the financial statement for the prior prior years audit. And and I'm just going to talk about the general fund here. And in twenty fourteen, your general fund had a an unrestricted fund balance of about seventy six thousand, which was five percent of the expenditures. And as as Aaron mentioned, the government government finance officers association recommends seventeen percent in the general fund, so you were well below that. And also, your audit comments, you had a couple of comments in the first couple of years, and then in twenty sixteen, you had a whopping ten audit comments for material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. So in twenty sixteen, as Aaron had mentioned earlier, the unrestricted balances, well, close to seventeen percent, it was getting close to what the GFOA wanted, what you had the audit comments of, you know, you had ten of them. So that was the year Jim started at the end of twenty, after the twenty sixteen fiscal year. And Jim, Jim and I talked after that audit, and he told me he was going to get rid of those ten audit comments, and he was going to make the village a model village. And I had my doubts, but I mean, you can see the numbers on that spreadsheet, your unrestricted fund balance got up to seventy eight percent by twenty twenty of of the expenditures, so that's well over the GFAs, GFOA's recommendation. And you haven't had an audit comment in the last three years, the last three audits. So going from from ten comments in twenty sixteen down to two comments in twenty seventeen, that's that's it's great to see. And in the financial position has improved dramatically. I've been doing this since ninety eight, and I've never seen a municipality turn around so quickly like the the village of Vicksburg did, and and I've never seen the comments go away like like they did. So I'd say a great job and congratulations.
Yeah, thank you, Steve, and thank you for your help, bringing us to this point and continued success for all the for the village and and the staff. So I'll go around and ask, you know, direct Mr. Olson, trustee Olson, is there anything you'd like to bring up, any comments or questions?
The only question I had, I spoke with Jim about, and I I learned stuff that I didn't know before, and that is if like the the water main break we had down on Callum's U Avenue. My question to Jim was, who's, you know, where's that money come from to pay for that? Does that come out of the general fund, does that come out of the water fund, or does it come out of DPW? And Jim took the time to explain it, and I tell you what, I learned more in a couple of minutes than I ever imagined. So Jim might want to touch on that with you guys, because I thought it all came out of DPW, but.
No, that's, it goes to the enterprise fund and the fund balances, so so if it's a sewer related issue, anything from materials to labor, outside contractors and our own labor, it would be be charged against the sewer fund. Likewise, to water in in that, so so that's one reason we have to be prepared with, and and it's also overseen by the state, we have a certain percentage we have are required to have in reserve for those emergencies.
And then what about overtime for the guys?
That that would be associated with the fund that is being charged. So if it if they have a Saturday after hours involving a a water main break, that those expenses would be charged to the water fund. And and likewise, it's it's something we do different under. Steve provided that guidance advice, I mean, we track every single truly in fifteen minute increments, how much time is spent plowing streets, mowing lawns, where those are located, with the goal being that we debit that money out of the appropriate revenue source in in trying to protect our general fund to grow it.
Thanks, Jim.
Trustee Reaster, ask of the same.
I just, I was, I've been very excited about looking over all of this information through the audit and so forth, and seeing where we are right now, I mean, I think it's absolutely phenomenal also that we have gone from such a like a seven percent up to seventy eight percent. I can't imagine being able to do that in four years, so I thank the whole team for making that work, I I just think it's amazing. So thank you.
Julie?
No, I'm just real impressed, too, I think we all should be really happy with the state of the village financially. And so it's it's a real good thing.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan Wagner?
Thank you, Tim. I'm just really, I'm interested to see where we're going to end up with our water and sewer funds, because I really want to show to the citizens that that planning and that increase in expense and all of the steps that have been taken so far are going to be effective. Really, I just want to show that it's going to pay off in the long run, so that we can show those balances in those funds, they're going to go towards the projects, they'll be completed in a timely fashion, and that, you know, it was actually worth something in the long run that we can show off for them.
Yeah, ditto. Trustee Holmes?
Just a couple of comments, thank you, President Frisbee. Mr. Stevens, if you could go back to the 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 chart that shows the the water and sewer enterprise fund, in the that compares the unrestricted, I think, as well as the the capital investments.
You want to serve the sewer or the water?
There we go, right there. But my my question is this, as a follow up to trustee Wagner's comment regarding the investments that we're making significantly this year and the next couple of months, we're going to start. What should we expect, what will this, what will this look like next year, this this paragraph? What will twenty twenty one look like with the the amount of money that is or funds that are being invested in capital assets?
So I would, I don't have the the crystal ball, but based on everything that I know and in what I understand about the projects that are going on, I would expect your net investment to capital assets component to increase. And the the unrestricted portion, I wouldn't be surprised if it decreased, but it may not, it depends on the other things that you have going on in the in the sewer fund. But certainly, any of the so you're you're borrowing money to put in this project, so you're going to add the capital assets to that net investment capital asset portion, but you're going to subtract out the the related debt. So in the in the first few years, that that might net out to to pretty close to zero, but but because you're adding a new capital asset, you're going to have more depreciation expense. So it it will come into play, but I expect the the net investment capital assets piece to increase and and the unrestricted probably will will come down a bit, but but again, it depends on what else is going on during the year.
Okay, thank you. And and just a quick comment. And I and I appreciate Mr. Mallory giving me his ear this afternoon, and we talked a little bit. The the one thing that for me that over the last three years and being on council to see really is the financial stewardship within the community, to to Mr. Olson's comment, you you really only know what you know, and you know, the more that you participate in in these type of discussions, you you learn so much. And I think as a as an average citizen, prior to joining, you know, the council, you you don't really have this perspective, and the one thing that I think is a challenge sometimes is explaining to people, you know, the 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 good that's being done in this area, because it's one thing to talk about unrestricted funds and the growth and yada yada, and it's another thing, though, to be able to show people, you know, what we're, what's being done tangible in the community that with their money and and how they should feel about it. And so the one thing that, you know, I remember in my in my conversation today with Mr. Mallory, you know, the one comment that Jim made to me was, you know, what Rick, what can we do to, you know, that to 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 get this message out there? And it's something that I've I've actually thought a lot about this afternoon, and I wish I I had the best answer, but I I really think it's incumbent upon all of us to in our discussions with citizens is to really convey this to them, because from my perspective, this is probably one of the most single tangible things that that this council and previous councils have done for this community, when you look, when you have someone like, you know, like Mr. Breyer say, in my professional career, I've never seen anything like this. I mean, this is, this is like a goat, you know, greatest of all time moments, you know, it's not Tom Brady. It's it's what is being accomplished tonight, and I'm not trying to pontificate here, I'm just really saying that I think it's it's a challenge for us to be able to educate the community. But I think from my perspective at least, it's something that I'm really making an effort to do when I talk to people, to just make sure they know the good that's being done on their behalf and and with their tax dollars.
Yeah, thank you, Rick, you're absolutely right with that. And I think it comes up in conversation, but they know who we are and what we do is seated in this position that always comes up in conversation, and you know, we just need to convey that message positively to the residents, you know, it's a lot of, a lot of tax money, but it takes money to grow a village, it takes money to run a village, and you know, we've spent many, many years just Robin Peter to pay Paul and not looking forward in investing in the infrastructure, we're we're kind of paying the price now, but I'll I'll let trustee Keller, I passed over him.
Not intentionally, I'm sure. Yeah, everybody's kind of stolen my thunder. I want to thank Mr. Stevens and Mr. Breyer for all the work they did, getting this all taken care of and for the staff. But going back to the water and sewer fund, mainly that, you know, everybody's rates, and we we talked about this two years ago, what we were going to do, this wasn't a surprise, but but evidently it was a surprise, and you know, nobody, nobody likes their rates going up, I mean, nobody does. As I've said to people before in meetings, mine mine have doubled from what they used to be, and it's just my wife and I living here now, we used to have two kids here. So I I get it, I understand. But people also need to understand, we 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 spent time and money a couple of years ago identifying critical needs of our systems. And what we're doing this spring and summer was an immediate need that had to get done. And the only way we were going to be able to handle this was to demonstrate to the federal government that we could sustain our our sewer fund because the balance in there wasn't sufficient. And people need to understand that, I mean, like President Frisbee said, we were Robin Peter to pay Paul, well, now it's time to pay the piper, and it's unfortunate. But nobody wants to have their their infrastructure collapse either, and we were getting dangerously close to having a major problem that we couldn't afford to fix, so I think we're in a lot better position now than we were a couple of years ago. And it's to the staff's foresight, looking forward at what we needed that got us here, thank goodness, so.
That's really true, I I I think it's much better to be proactive than reactive.
I think time will show that this team and the previous, and you know, the last seated trustees were were just that, you know, I I know this team now, we're very forward thinking, we're very proactive and trying to do the right thing for the for the village now and in the long in the long term, so. You know, I I know I look back in two thousand and sixteen, just about this same time, sitting in the office, and it was the first time I had, I think I'd met Steve Breyer, but it was after the audit, after the ten comments. I can remember looking at Jim, I was like, what did I get into? And he said, don't worry, Tim, I got this. We got it, you know? We got got to that point, we just need to, we just need to continue this and be responsible, as we're doing now, for the taxpayers' dollars, being forward thinking, and it's all working, so Jim's got it. We appreciate that, and appreciate the council and all the trustees, and I really appreciate the discussion we've had here over the last couple of weeks about this. Good, open debate is very healthy for everybody, so. Jim, was there any other areas we need?
If if there's no no other questions, we can, or or comments for Aaron or Steve, we can go ahead and and say goodbye to them. They can go ahead and click off, we understand they're they're busy and it's late in the hour. I think what we can do, I would recommend for our time is if Michelle Morgan, I asked her just to kind of explain in a little bit on what we're looking at coming up in probably in five or six minutes, be able to explain a Cedar program that we're going to put in front of the council in February and answer questions on that, then that'll get us off of this webinar probably around six minutes to seven, which gives us plenty of time to jump on the seven o'clock call.
Do we, do we have to have a motion to approve the audit?
That's a good catch, Gail. So yes, we would like a a motion and support on the record to accept the audit and have that part of the record, please.
Opened any?
Missed what he said.
We're looking for.
Trustee Keller, so moved.
Trustee Keller makes the motion, is there support?
Reaster support.
Reaster support, okay, roll call vote will be trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
President Adams, or Frisbee. I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be efficient with the thousand pre made forms of roll call votes we must have did five years ago. I'm scrapping them, though, we're redoing it.
Motion passes.
It's probably time.
Put a demerit down for myself, the motion does pass. So thanks, Stephen, Aaron.
Thank you very much.
I pre thank Michelle for for being ready, we didn't know how much time we'd have, so I'll turn it over to her and talk about that program.
Okay, thanks, Jim. So we'll just start, near the end of spring two thousand and eighteen, we began investing the committed monies that the council by resolution had committed for a municipal building. The investment type we had been using is a traditional certificate of deposit or CDs at multiple local banks, and we have continued that procedure with each subsequent resolution. We are pleased to say that we have accumulated over twenty one thousand and earned interest in the short time of investing in a time period when interest rates have been low. Because we are fiscally prudent, the sum of our committed money is growing, and so does our need for safety in investing. Even though banks rarely fail, we feel that we must safeguard our investments. So with safety in mind, we have been researching moving from traditional CDs to Cedars, which stands for certificate, a deposit, account registry service. Banks that offer CDs are members of a special network, the Cedars network. The Cedars program helps us allow, helps us by allowing us to work with one bank, staying below the FDIC insurance limits of two hundred and fifty thousand at any one bank. This program allows the village to spread our money into CDs of various banks, usually with the goal of staying below FDIC insurance limits at any one bank. But instead of opening accounts at multiple banks individually, we can open a single account and use the Cedars service to manage the funds. A Cedars program promises simplicity. We work with one financial institution. We receive one rate for each maturity and can view all our CDs on a single statement. It is important to note that not all banks offer the Cedars program. Therefore, we are taking this. Therefore, we are taking this month of January two thousand and twenty-one to look at banks, banking institutions that are members of the Cedars network to determine which bank offers the best Cedars program for our village. The strategy would be, the strategy would be to take the whole two thousand and twenty-one calendar year and invest two hundred thousand each month into Cedar CD. Once the Cedar CD matures, we can evaluate each month if we only carry the interest earned or add to the total of a new Cedar CD. I believe once we initiate the Cedars program, we should be open, we should open them individually for one-year periods of time. With two point four million potentially invested, we know that the Cedar CDs is the safest and our best course of action. Because not all banks offer a Cedars program, we will have a recommendation to come later with more specific information. I'll pause for comments and questions. I know we're tight on time, but.
We've got time. We've got time.
Yeah, basically.
Are there banks in the area that we know of yet, or haven't you, haven't you gotten that?
Yes, there are several banks to choose from.
Okay, great area. Okay. Is this only for municipalities, or can individuals do this also?
Actually, that's a question I don't know the answer to.
That's all right.
We 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 have, we have, we have someone on the call that can can give firsthand, I do believe. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wagner.
Mr. Wagner, okay.
We're going to turn it over to Mr. Wagner for the official answer.
Yes, Cedars are available to individuals as well as entities, so businesses and municipalities.
So are we locked in at that one year? Is there penalties for early withdrawal on a CD if we have some catastrophe and?
Well, that, there there might be a slight penalty, but we would, as we start out the year, we're already going to have, I mean, other CDs will come up. But we have additional cash in in the bank that could be used. I don't want to jinx this, but it would be, it would have to be a huge one to to impact it. But we did come up with the two hundred thousand a month to do that for twelve months between February of twenty-one and January of twenty-two, based on kind of that formula. And also, better yet, setting up one year from now, every January, we look, get results from the audit. The past, this will be the, you know, the fourth or third January in a row where we've committed and assigned money. So a year from now, as we evaluate the results of this next audit, and we've talked about how it compounds in a positive way, we'll be able to recommend if additional monies would be warranted to go into the Cedar program or if we, on some of the capital purchases that we have planned out, I think in two thousand and twenty-two is a pickup truck for DPW and a potentially a Bobcat or something. So so that's part of how we came up with the two hundred thousand per month for twelve months.
It's a beautiful thing when you can buy equipment with the interest you've earned by your financial responsibility, so it says a lot.
Yeah, and on on real practical dollars, like Michelle said, it was a little over, I think, twenty-one thousand over the past twelve months. And we had talked about this about a year or fifteen months ago, but but the second meeting in February, we're going to put forward to to get each of the council members a tablet. And I mean, we're obviously online, but we can move towards a paperless system as well with that. So basically, those investments will pay for that entire program in one year and and not take, and and again, our goals are simple, identify different revenue streams so we can protect the year's general fund revenue. So we'd be able to to put a tablet in each one's hand for well less than twenty-one thousand, but we won't touch incoming tax dollars at all.
I really love the fact that we are, we're, we're paying for things. We're not taking out loans. We're not, you know, we're, we're setting aside money for things. I I really like that policy.
You got everybody shaking in favor. We're all in agreement.
Very well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle. Thank you. Any further comments or questions in that regard?
No, I think they're they're fantastic programs to protect capital and give you that control and flexibility. One of the largest things is, from my experience in business, is that many municipalities often will expose themselves on the liability that Michelle was talking about, so protecting that FDIC coverage for the funds that are available to the municipality. It's incredibly common that they either do not protect that or that they use the Cedars program to do so.
Very good.
Thank you. What, there's no other comments? We'll adjourn this meeting and move to our regular session meeting at seven.
So Jimmy, you didn't want to do your tenure.
No, I'll I'll do it at the with the time with at the agenda item under council agenda items.
Okay.
So where where we do the capital.
You sure?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, I'll go ahead and end this one and see you all on the next one.
See you soon.